Evening, I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the Thursday, May 27, 2021 meeting of the Clive City Council. Will the clerk please call her all?
Mayor Sirxina.
Here.
Council members, Klein.
Here.
Edwards.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Judkins.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
All present and accounted for, nice to see everybody via Zoom. I would note at the outset that this will be our last Zoom meeting, hopefully for a long, long time. Although we'll still continue to offer this service. We'll go back into in-person meetings next month, starting on the TAPs, so looking forward to that. But great to see everybody. As is our tradition, we have a Boy Scout from Tribe 208 to come recite the Pledge of Allegiance for us. And we have Ewan Cooper to do that. Ewan, are you all set up with Pete so you can recite for us?
Ewan, you should be able to start your video as well.
I did, it's, might not be loading.
So Ewan, when you recite the pledge, the rest of us will be muted, so you'll be reciting it by yourself. And when you're ready, why don't you just tell us a couple of things about yourself and your scouting career?
Yeah, I'm a second-class Boy Scout. I've been doing Boy Scouts for about a year now. I did Cut Scouts when I was a littler kid. It's a lot of fun, I like it a lot.
Outstanding, well, thanks for being with us tonight. Why don't you go ahead and recite the pledge when you're ready?
Alright. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ewan, thank you for joining us tonight and for doing that for us. You're welcome back anytime to recite the pledge for us. So good luck on your scouting career and with wrapping up school for the year. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move to approval of the agenda, I'm not aware of any changes.
Move approval.
Moved by John, seconded by Eric, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Agenda is approved. So we'll move now to citizens' presentation. This is where anyone joining us on the call this evening wishes to address the council on an item that is not currently on the agenda this evening. Is there anybody here to do so? If so, please make yourself known to Pete, Pete DeCook, so he can connect you to us. Thank you.
Folks, the best way to do that is to use either the chat function or to use the raise hand function. At the bottom of your Zoom screen, you should see an icon that says participants. If you click on that, a separate window will open and, or a side window will open and at the bottom of that window, you'll see the raise hand icon. Mayor, I do not see any hands going up.
Thank you, Pete. Seeing none, we'll move to two formal presentations that we have this evening. The first is a dynamic team from Crestview School of Inquiry, the sixth-grade class, to share some recommendations for Lannan Park improvements with us. And Pete, you're gonna lead us.
Thank you, Your Honor. So we're very, very pleased this evening to have a number of faculty and students from Crestview School of Inquiry here for our meeting. Tonight is particularly, we're gonna hear from Serenity Bagby and Princess Johnson. I'm still looking for Princess, who may already be on the call, but if she is, I do not see her name as one of the participants right now. So Princess, if you could send me a chat message real quick, indicating who you are, so I can unmute you. But I do know right now that we have Serenity with us and then also their teacher, one of their teachers, Kristen Gerhardt, as well. I'll share my screen, Mayor and council, so you can all see the presentation that was also in your packet. One moment. Alright, is everyone ever able to see that?
Yeah, I can see it just fine, thank you.
Great, thank you, Mayor. So at this point, Serenity and Kristen, Mrs. Gerhardt, if you would like to start taking us through the presentation, and I'll be happy to advance slides for you.
Thank you, thanks for having us. It sounds like Princess is trying to get logged in, but I'm not sure, she must be having some issues, so keep watching.
I'll keep an eye for her.
Yep. So our sixth-grade team got the privilege of working with the city of Clive on this project, and the kids have just done a fantastic job with their work. And so I know Serenity is ready to share. And Serenity, I can help out with the slides we planned for Princess, okay? Sound good? Okay, she's ready, so you can go to the first slide.
The process we've gone through, working with Lannan Park, is we actually went to Lannan Park and we saw what things we liked about the park and what things we didn't like about the park and what things we thought could be changed. And then we also looked at background information from the city. And we made, we made survey questions first, and then we actually made surveys to give to different other students. And we got multiple responses. And so we analyzed the survey results to see what people, what our community wanted and what they liked about the park and what they wanted to change about the park and what they thought was nice about it. And then we made park layouts out of different boards. It was called like a mural board and a Lena board. So the Lena board had different pictures from it to show what we wanted in the park. And then the mural board, we like laid it out.
Can you go back a slide? I think it is.
Yep.
Yep, there we go. And Princess, did she happen to just get on? Sorry.
I'm still watching for, haven't seen her come in yet.
Okay, okay. So I'll share that. So we're also like continuing to work right now. So some opportunities the kids have had, obvious, has been the West Des Moines School District. We made a presentation to kind of share our project with, with the district and with our community and made a really neat video about what the kids have done and are pairing with Clive. And that a lot of the kids got to share their thinking and what their experience was. And then they've gotten the opportunity, Serenity has, and Princess, hopefully will have the opportunity to present here at the city council. And then tomorrow is gonna be really exciting because we're all going to walk back to Lannan Park and meet Pete and Amanda and some other people, I believe, and have kind of like a dedication sort of to the mini pitch that's already there and like an opportunity for the, the city to thank the kids for their hard work. And I know they kind of have a gift, kind of to give them as well. So that's gonna be really fun. And then we just look forward to continuing our relationship and planning more projects in the future.
And I do see that Princess is trying to join here by phone. Princess, if you could hear us, to unmute yourself, you just need to hit star six. We're having just a little bit of trouble, so why don't we continue with the presentation? I'll advance to the next slide.
These are mine and Princess's groups' maps from the mural boards that we made. So basically, what we did is we had to take the things that were highly requested by the community that they, that we thought we might need in the park and what most of the community wanted in the park. So on the left, that's Princess's group's board that they made. And then on the right is mine, from my, from my group. And we had to lay out the, how we wanted Lannan Park to look on the mural board. And at first, it was a little hard for me because like it wasn't an actual map, so it was kind of hard for me to see where it all was in real life from the mural board. But then I kind of got off the hang of it, and it was really fun.
This was a really neat tool to teach the kids, too, because it's an actual tool that, that would be used in a planning process like this. So, so I think they really enjoyed having that experience and being able to move things around and manipulate and fill and figure out, just like any, you know, city planner would be doing as far as like what, what would be the best placement for things. They had to come up with reasons for why they needed to put it, put things where they put them, what makes the most sense. So it was, it was a really great experience for them. They enjoyed it a lot. Okay, so I think this was one of Princess's. So I'll share, so these were just some of the top requested amenities that we came up with from our survey. So when they gave the survey, these were like the top three things that really kind of stuck out. They had a lot of requests for swings, more swings, and a lot of stories, I know, from the kids' personal experience. That was something that they always felt there wasn't enough of. And even when we went to the park, they kind of argued over who was gonna get the swing and who wasn't. So that was kind of a big deal. And I love the picture, too, because something that came up in our research was the idea of swings that would be inclusive for all and what kind of, you know, we, one of our goals that we set was that we want everyone to feel welcome there and what would, what would need to be there. So how could we make swings that are accessible for all people? And then the splash pad was also a really popular one with 50% of people wanting it. And then the skate park was also popular, especially at this age group. One, another thing that I heard them saying over and over again was, well, I don't go as much because that I can't, there's not as much to do there for me. You know, play at this age, little kids, it's made for little kids, parks are made for little kids. So we talked about how, what are the amenities that you would want there that would attract older, older kids as well, in all ages? And this was one that came up, was the skate park.
The other requested amenities were new large shelter with improved bathrooms because there was a lot of complaining, like when we were working in our groups, everyone was talking about how they wanted new bathrooms and stuff like that. So, and then a new large playground. A lot of the things that was heard in my class were they wanted more obstacles and like more things to like, I, like more activities on the playground, I guess. Inclusive equip, inclusive equipment, specifically swings, like Ms. Gerhardt was talking about, how we needed like handicap swings so it was accessible to all people that went to the park. A new basketball court, a new volleyball court, community gardens and flower beds. I know that came up in my class, too, how it would be a good time for the community to like come together and garden. And then new seating areas.
And I believe we have Princess who's been able to join us as well. Princess, you should be able to unmute yourself and start your video as well. We've got you. Welcome, Princess, glad that we got that figured out. Alright, we'll advance to the next slide.
Oh, okay.
You ready, Princess? You can take this one.
So we've been working with $2.5 million for our Lannan Park project. The cost of the swings was $15,000 to $25,000. The cost of the splash pad was $350,000 to $700,000. And the cost of the splash pad, I mean, the cost of the skate park was $100,000 to $500,000.
So we've, with that, council, that was the end of the presentation, and I'm sure the students would be happy to take your questions.
Well, very nice presentation, I'll start, and a lot of work, it looks like, that went into this. So my thanks and appreciation to, to students and teachers that, that took the time to, to undertake this study and to help us. Covered a lot of bases there, so some pretty good stuff. Council, questions for the group?
Well, I would ask Serenity and Princess, what, what'd you guys learn from this process?
Um, I know, one thing I learned is that, well, it's really hard to work in groups for that long because that was like the longest period of time I've ever worked in a group. And it was really hard to like agree on things. And we all had to work on the mural boards and Lena boards at the same time, so that was really hard. And this was actually the first project I got to work with like the actual community and work with different citizens in the Clive community and get their ideas on what to do with the project, too. So that was really fun.
Princess, how about you?
One thing I learned, I also kind of grew with Serenity, like working in groups. Like on the Lena boards and like our mural boards, I think that was like the hardest part in our group because like one person like wanted to put something else like in this spot, but like I wanted to like put it somewhere else. So we kind of had to like persuade each other to like our side, to like why it should be there and why. But like in the end, we like figured it out.
Well, that's awesome, those are great skills, you're gonna need those skills as you get older. And we still have to try to figure out how to work as a group ourselves, so, so, well done.
I would ask you guys, what would you do differently with this project from based upon what you've learned? If anything?
One thing I would have done differently with this project, um, I don't know, there was a lot of stuff that I really liked about this project. It was just some stuff that was hard with working with the groups and stuff, but other than that, I don't think anything else.
Yeah, I don't think I would do anything differently either.
I kind of thought, sorry, one thing I kind of thought was, I kind of, after that one time at the park, um, after that, it was a little hard to remember like where different things were. So I kind of wish we went to the park maybe a little bit more often, not like all the time every week, but maybe like a little bit more often so we could like refresh our memories on what the park looked like.
That's a good note to your teacher while she's on, that you need to go to the park every week when you work on projects like this. Weekly, daily, whatever you can get away with, but I think that can be accommodated for the next round of students. They should thank you for that one. But I wanna, you know, that, that was huge for us as the city and the council as well. At my day job, I always say that we aren't, you know, down in my office, we shouldn't be picking the locker rooms or what the, you know, what our staff wants at other of our locations. We should be allowing those that use it to be picking what it looks like. And so as good as our staff is and our Parks Department is, and as good as the handle they have on all that, the best information comes from you that use it. And so thanks for spending all that time and putting all that effort into giving us a head start on this park.
I agree with all of you that I really like swings. I just wondered if there were any types of swings that you had in mind that should be included?
I don't like the swings that we have now. Because like I kind of found, when we were researching on what different types of swings there were and what kind of swings that we wanted to put in the park, there was a couple of different kinds of swings. But I guess majority of my class, and I talked with a few of the other sixth graders about it at recess, we were talking about the projects and stuff. Um, we kind of thought that we liked the swings now, we just wanted newer ones and we wanted more swings because there's like a lot of arguing about who wants, who's on the swing next. And there's just, and it's just a lot of argue, I don't know, it's just a lot of arguing and people are like, well, I want to go next and you've been on the swing not long and I, I don't know, it's a lot. And then obviously handicap swings, so it's accessible to everyone, like we said, and yeah.
Well, as we, as we continue to work our planning process through our Community Action Committee, which meets regularly, and I find it interesting that the boards are similar to what the committee is using, we'll look forward to, 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 I guess, combining your information and your findings with what the rest of the group is visiting about for our vision for the area and certainly for the park. And we'll look forward to coming back to you with some other opportunities to even provide some more input. So this is, this will be ongoing for a while, and I just appreciate your great efforts to assist us in our planning. So thank you for being with us tonight. Council, are there other questions for the group? Seeing none, Ms. Gerhardt, thank you for your leadership, and we'll look forward to being in touch. Serenity and Princess, thank you again for all of your work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, very good, we're gonna move to the next presentation now, which is the 2021 Continuous Process Improvement for Community Development. And Amanda is gonna take us through that. Amanda?
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, everyone. I'm gonna just share my screen here real quick. So I know we've presented before on some of our updates that we've made to the iMap, the internal mapping that we all have access to as city employees. So this is yet another update we've been able to incorporate that largely plays into our iMap. And this is through our planometric data, which planometrics are really any physical feature of the land, sidewalks, roads, homes, decks, anything you can imagine. Basically drawing a box around it to locate it on the map, that is your planometric data. So the city has been using planometric data. Initially, it was 2006, 2007, there was a metro-wide effort to get that initial data created. And then it has been updated once, hired out since that time in 2014. And then in 2018, we had looked at again, hiring that process out to update the planometric data. And that was going to be at a cost of around $20,000 to do that update. And those updates through the hiring out process are just based on the aerial imagery. I turned the aerial off here so you can see the features a little bit better, but I'll turn that back on in a few minutes, you can kind of see, actually this area, I'll go ahead and turn on now. You can see there are no homes in the aerial update because the aerial is older than our development, of course. So that kind of shows one of the main problems we have with relying on the aerial. The data is relatively old by the time you get it, sometimes up to a year old already that you're not capturing in your update. And then also, it's not very accurate when you are looking at just the aerial by itself. You can see here with aerials, there's just some natural distortion that you get since the earth isn't flat. We can see that, so each time you get a new aerial, everything will shift slightly. So you can see here, the old aerial was showing that the driveway for this home was actually located partially onto the neighbor's property. Obviously, we know that's not actually the case. So that's one of the improvements we wanted to make with taking this process in-house. So that update for the process improvement is actually based on pulling the site plans in. So we're using those to update the planometric data now. Here's an example, you can see that was an old, old feature set on a property that had been digitized in one of the earlier planometric updates using the aerial. And here, again, you can see this lighter brown box here is the actual house footprint captured from the aerial. But again, it's crossing the property line a little bit up here in the corner onto the neighbor's property. And you can just see how far off it really is on where that footprint for the home lies. And then this one I corrected is the example for this presentation here and revise those to actually fall in where the boundaries are on the site plan, which is much more accurate than we can capture on the aerial. So basically, what we've been able to accomplish from bringing this process in-house and relying on these site plans, which I won't get into all the technical side of how that's done, I'll spare you guys the boring details that Cory and I could probably talk about for hours. But by bringing that process in-house, we've been able to get more updated data and more accurate data. And that helps us deliver a more, a better customer service level. For instance, on the newer portion of the community, you could see there is no aerial capture of those homes. So there would have been nothing to digitize into the planometric data. That's of course where a lot of the development questions we get are people who've bought their new home and want to add their pool or a deck or a patio. And they call us to find out what they can and can't do. Now we have this resource that is updated monthly when the building permits are issued. So we can pull that up and look very quickly to see, you know, how much side yard do they have left? Do they have room to add anything in particular in that area, be it a deck or anything else? And then also, we can overlay that with the other information we have on hand, such as where easements are located on the property. So it's easier to pull that information and see how close are you to an easement? How close are you to different utility lines and other things that there might be concerns with that aren't all necessarily shown on the site plans? So we can overlay a lot of information here. And with this, I'd mentioned that Cory had helped with this process. He helped with updating the database structure that has all kind of the backend information in it. Him and I worked through that process together. And then I actually performed the monthly updates of geo-referencing in those site plans and drawing the features. And this process is saving, our last update for an estimate was $20,000 to do the, to do the update based on the aerial. That's an expense that we were going to be a recurring expense every two to four years, depending on how updated we want the data to be. So in this case, and we do know that cost is increasing, our 2018 or 2014 update was only $18,000 in sum, so it had increased, you know, a significant amount since the last update. So with the increasing cost and level of accuracy, we felt this was something we could improve upon. So that's our, our big update for the year. So now that's really a very technical one, so I'll turn it over to you guys to see if you have any questions.
That looks great, Amanda. Council, do you have questions? Well, great job, and always progress that can be made in this area. And I would say $20,000 adds up pretty fast. So Amanda, thank you and the team for, for this continuous improvement.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, council, we're gonna move down to consent items.
Move the resolution.
Second.
It's moved by John, seconded by Eric, is that right? Further discussion? Seeing now, will the council please vote?
Sorry, Mayor, that's not displaying, but it is five to zero, passed.
Okay, Matthew, thank you, that passes five to zero. Okay, now we're gonna proceed to action items. Tonight, we have two public hearings. The first public hearing is regarding the 2021 Buffalo Road Water Connection Project. And Brandon is gonna take us through that. Brandon?
Yeah. So the city received bids last, thank you, Mayor. The city received bids last Tuesday for the 2021 Buffalo Road Water Connection Project. Again, this project consists of connecting to the West Des Moines Water System to provide a backup connection for the Buffalo Road area south of Walnut Creek. In the event the connection across Walnut Creek is lost, this one's sure that the city can provide supply to the area at all times. And the project location can be seen in the location map in your packet. There are also three consent agenda items associated with this project, which were to approve a temporary and permanent water manisment for a property owned by Mid-American Energy, as well as a 28E agreement with West Des Moines Water Works, in which West Des Moines Water Works agrees to sell to Clive Potable Water. Other permits have also been acquired with the city of West Des Moines, the Iowa Interstate Railroad, and the Iowa DNR. Construction is anticipated to start in June and be substantially complete prior to school starting back up again this fall. Four bids were received with Rognis Corporation being read as the lowest responsible bidder. You have a tabulation of those results included in your packet. Although the city has not directly contracted with Rognis Corporation as a prime contractor in the past, staff is familiar with their work as a subcontractor. And with that, staff would recommend award to Rognis Corporation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Brandon, thank you. Brandon, thank you. Uh, before we proceed with questions, Matthew was, uh, did we post appropriate public notice?
Yes, Your Honor, it was published in the Des Moines Register, May 12th, 2021.
Thank you, Matthew. Uh, counsel questions?
Move to close public hearing.
Uh, moved by John, seconded by Eric to close the public hearing. Before we do so, is there anybody here to speak on this item? If so, please make yourself known to Pete DeCook so he can connect you to us.
And we do have one participant by phone now. For that participant, the way to raise your hand when you're on the phone is to press star nine. For others, you may use the chat function or you may use the raise hand function in Zoom. Mayor, I do not see any hands going up.
Okay, thank you, Pete. So the first is, uh, item A is resolution approving plans and specifications.
I think we needed to vote on.
Oh, pardon me. Uh, so seeing no further discussion, uh, will the council please vote to close the public hearing?
Matthew, please mark me down as a yes. I'm just having a little technical right now.
That passes five to zero to close the public hearing. Now we'll move to the resolution items.
Move the resolution approving plans and specs.
Second.
Uh, moved by John, seconded by Eric. Further discussion? Seeing none, will the council please vote?
Same, Matthew. Yes.
That passes five to zero.
Move to receive the bids.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Eric. Further discussion? Seeing none, will the council please vote?
Good job, Mike. All right, let me refresh this. Mayor, it's lagging.
I take it Michael's a yes, so that.
Yeah, there, there they are. There we go.
Move, move the resolution, awarding the contract to low bidder, Rognis Corp. for $299,410.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Eric. Further discussion? Seeing none, will the council please vote? And that passes five to zero. Thank you, Brandon.
Mayor, for the record, you might want to repeat that item, uh, uh, 1B was passed five to zero.
Sorry, Eric, which item?
Yeah, for the record, Mayor, uh, item 1B, receipt of bids, pass five to zero.
I had displayed incorrectly, but it was five to zero. I got it in there now.
Yeah, okay, very good. All right, thank you again, Brandon. Uh, we'll move to the second public hearing regarding the, uh, FY21 Budget Amendment. And, uh, Matthew, to be post-appropriate public notice.
Yes, Your Honor, it was published May 14th, 2021, in the Des Moines Register.
Thank you, Matthew. Joyce, you're gonna guide us through this one.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. What you have before you hear is our annual process where we go back through and amend our budget, which we had adopted about 18 months ago. So, um, in the memo, I outlined the overall arching changes that I made to it. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Um, this one was much more, I would say, routine than last year's budget amendment. So there are no, I guess, positive ending fund balances. So it was, it was much more fun to do, so.
Well, good. Counsel questions for Joyce?
I'll move the resolution.
No, move to close public hearing.
Oh, was it a public hearing? Oh, yeah, my bad.
Ted seconded.
Uh, move to close public hearing by Ted, seconded by Michael?
Sure. Close now.
Seeing no further discussion, will the council please vote? That passes five to zero.
Now I will move to resolution.
Second.
Moved by Ted, seconded by Michael. Further discussion? Seeing none, will the council please vote? And that, uh, resolution passes five to zero. Um, I am going to, I know this is procedurally incorrect, but I'm gonna back up a little bit. Uh, before we close the public hearing, I did not, uh, invite anyone that was on the call that wished to speak on this item, uh, to give them an opportunity to speak. If there's somebody to do that, please make yourself known to Pete DeCook, and he'll connect you with us because we do want to hear from you on this, on this topic.
Mayor, I do not see any hands going up.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Pete. All right, we're gonna move to action item number three, which is Shadow Creek Plat 9. And Amanda?
Mayor, counsel, good evening again. Um, this is the Shadow Creek Plat 9 Preliminary Plat. We also have the construction drawings for the first phase ready for your approval tonight as well. Um, we did discuss this project, um, in a greater amount of detail in January when we did the Development Agreement Amendment, um, for the Shadow Creek North area. So I'll kind of hit the highlights tonight and mostly leave it up to you guys to ask questions. Um, because what they are showing on the preliminary plat and construction drawings is consistent with what we had discussed for that Development Agreement Amendment. Um, so this area is just under 15 acres of that larger 170-some acre tract of land. Um, in our northwest corner, it is bound by Warrior Lane on the west side. And you can see here, there is a phase line in the middle. But with the second phase, it will also butt up to Westgate, um, the Westgate Parkway extension. Uh, that extension of Westgate Parkway and the road, um, for the second phase are intended to be constructed at the same time. That phase line was determined on the sanitary sewer break point for where the flows will go. Um, so that was the logic they used to determine that phasing. Um, and that allows them the time needed to work through the plans for the Westgate Parkway construction, um, which will, as you know, eventually, um, end at Meredith. Uh, so these lots in particular allow for the, uh, minimum 50-foot frontages, uh, for the lot width. Um, that is something that we amended the development agreement to allow. Um, that is something that is not available in the Clive market currently for any new construction. Um, and this is slightly smaller minimum square footages than our R4 Town Home Zoning. Um, this lets the single stories go down to 1,150 square feet. And that's also something that there is a lack of on the market in new construction, um, in the West Metro for our area. Um, and the other difference here from most of the other Shadow Creek development is the requirement for the garage is only a two-car garage, um, due to the narrower width of the lots. Figuring the three-car on most of these lots won't be, uh, practical. But again, that's something that isn't really being provided in our new development areas. Um, so as I said, there are two phases. Uh, once the second phase, um, is ready to be constructed, there is an item remaining, um, as part of Plan and Zoning Commission's recommendation. Um, and that is related to these lots 30 and 31 here along Westgate Parkway, whether or not we want to require the home orientation to be on Westgate Parkway as has been our standard, or if we are willing to allow the homes, because of those reduced lot widths, to orient onto what will be Alpine Drive rather than Westgate Parkway. Um, so between discussions with staff and the developer and the presentation at Plan and Zoning Commission, the recommendation by the commission was to go ahead and approve this in the Phase One construction drawings and allow some additional time to make that final decision on the orientation for those two lots, um, to be finally determined with the Phase Two construction drawings, since no houses are gonna be built in the meantime. And that would give the developer and the builder that they end up working with opportunity to, um, explore some alternative designs for those frontages to show, um, that they can keep kind of the intent of the design and that higher architectural standard along the Parkway, um, without maybe actually having the orientation there. Um, so that is something that staff's comfortable with, um, kind of pumping the decision on until the next phase. Um, the only other can, uh, other, excuse me, unresolved item that we've been proactively working on with the developer is needing that stormwater maintenance agreement for the wet bottom detention pond, um, that will serve for the stormwater management down in this area. Um, since that is not connected to any city park facilities, it will not become a city facility. Um, it will be owned and maintained ultimately by the Homeowners Association that will be established for this area. Um, so we have that draft agreement. It has been sent to the city attorney for review. Um, so we're just waiting to kind of finalize that. That's not actually needed until we get to the final plat phase. Um, so we're just wanting to proactively work on that to make sure we have everything ready to go, um, for when these, uh, properties are ready to start issuing permits that were not held up on any legal documents at that time. Um, so with that, staff would recommend approval with the condition of, um, amicably resolving the house orientation as Plan and Zoning Commission recommended. Um, and we would also recommend approval of the construction drawings as presented.
Counsel, questions?
Amanda, what's the price point on these units?
Um, these ones, I believe I saw Derek get on. I think they were gonna be around $320,000. Um, but Derek or Dave, if either of you are on to correct me, that would be great.
Yeah, this is Dave Harmeyer. Uh, that, uh, the answer is, I think that they're gonna be, we haven't selected, uh, the builders yet that we are wanting to, uh, work with. Uh, we have a few in mind and we've kind of worked on some elevations. But, um, I would, I would say the price point's probably gonna be three, three and a quarter to maybe as much as 400. Uh, but probably mostly all in the threes.
Thanks, Dave.
Other questions, counsel?
Move approval of the preliminary plant with adjustments as specified.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Eric. Any discussion? Seeing none, will the council please vote? Item passes five to zero.
Move approval of the construction drawings.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Eric. Further discussion? Seeing none, will the council please vote? That item passes five to zero as well. Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
And thank you, Dave, for being on. Okay, we'll move now to consent, uh, excuse me, uh, discussion items. So the first is Green Belt Landing, uh, phasing discussion, and Richard is gonna guide us through that. Richard?
All right. Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I'm gonna bring up a presentation here real quick. Uh, this is a continuation of our discussion in late April at the council meeting about Green Belt Landing and the, the new cost estimates and then the overall scope of what we're looking at. So, um, tonight we're here to, uh, follow up on that and get some of the council's feedback on some of the revisions and phasing and some of the, the feedback we got from the council. Can everyone see the presentation?
Yeah.
All right. So what I'll do is just kind of start with what we heard, uh, from the council at the last meeting. So overall, we felt that there was general support for the entire project scope, even at the increased price point. Um, did hear several concerns about the emphasis on the canoe and kayak access. Still like the access to the creek, but not necessarily focusing on a canoe and kayak access specifically. So, um, also, the special events building needs to be a higher priority in, in the, the first priority, uh, for construction, if possible. Um, there was also some questions about the Triad projects coming after Green Belt Landing due to the increased costs and what would be the impact of that, either delay or increased costs with those as well. And then also the council wanted to know, uh, a little bit more detail about what the city funding is, what the proposed, uh, grants is, federal, state, and local grants, as well as private donations and what target we're shooting for. So based on that, what we've done is a couple of different things. Uh, a quick kind of, just before we jump into our phasing options, this is what we presented the council in April. Three phases, $3 million approximately each, with, uh, the first one being the wetland, the boardwalk, and all the creek bank work along Walnut Creek. The second one being of the playground, the pond, stage, and festival area with the special events building and the parking lot kind of being the last project. So, uh, beyond that, we began to work with Smith Group and Beaster Kim, the local engineering group, on this project to review potential phasing options to really address the council's concerns and come back here tonight. So what we have now is all the scenarios that you'll receive here in a few minutes are having the project done in two phases. That just made the most sense once we got into it a little bit more. And the special events building is now part of the first phase in all of the scenarios. Also too, you'll see that the wetland and the boardwalk are part of all the first phase scenarios because most of the grants that we have secured to date really focus on that area. So from a funding standpoint, that's why you're gonna see some of these layouts. I won't go through all the details of each one of this, but, um, the first phasing concept we looked at was, uh, two phases. Uh, $5.1 million for a Phase One with most of the creek work, the wetland, the boardwalk, and the special events building, and only a little bit of the, the circulation improvements proposed in front of the Aquatic Center and to, to get down to the special events building. Everything else was proposed for Phase Two. The next concept we looked at was, uh, a Phase One of about $4.9 million. A very similar type of, um, what we proposed in the Concept One. But what we did here is we split out the, uh, half of the, the Walnut Creek work, basically the, the work east of the pedestrian bridge across there. Uh, the way we looked at it this way was to try to get them down to a little bit more even costs and see if they, um, that would make sense from the funding we have and the city funding and what private fundraising we need to do. The third one got a little bit closer to being about $4.5 million each, with Phase One being $4.7 million. This focused on the circulation improvements, the special events building, uh, the wetland and the boardwalk, but not some of the, the wetland and boardwa, or the stormwater work that would take the stormwater off 114th Street. We also, uh, put the, the kayak canoe, a water access into Phase Two as well. Then we, uh, went into a fourth phase. Um, this one kind of jumped up a little bit more based on what made sense from a construction standpoint. This had the wetland and the boardwalk in Phase One, all of the stormwater work along 114th. Again, the special events building and the circulation improvements. We felt like we were maybe getting a little bit closer here, but didn't just quite feel right. There's a lot of kind of crossing back and forth and just wasn't quite the right fit. So which leads us down to, uh, the fifth phasing concept that we looked at and the one that we are recommending to the council tonight. So I'll try to walk through this one in a little bit more detail. So we're proposing a Phase One of $5.5 million. It includes the special events building, the stormwater, wetland, and boardwalk, half of the Walnut Creek stabilization, uh, west of the pedestrian bridge, and then all the trail and, and, and parking lot work would be done in Phase One. In Phase Two would be everything else, but what, what I want to note here is we're actually recommending that the water access no longer be, uh, sited along Northwest 114th, like has been proposed all along. We actually think, um, a better location, based on the feedback, would be just east of the pedestrian bridge. That really kind of ties the, the water access amenities with the pond and the fishing improvements proposed, as well as, uh, allowing people to get into the water. It's a very visible location for, for people along that area, either using the existing trail or when the, the board, or the stage and the festival area is complete. So we think it's a, it's a better location for that. Uh, less emphasis on the kayak and canoes, but also from a construction standpoint, it makes sense because it all kind of lumps everything in Phase Two in a small area there, from the festival grounds to the east through the pond and all up to the creek. Also too, we want to note, while it's not really, uh, talked about. Also too, we want to note, while it's not really talked about and it's not included in phase one, should some of the fundraising go really well for the playground because that's a very popular item, it's something that draws a lot of attraction, that that could go in phase one if fundraising is successful for that, or if we have certain donors that really want to focus on that. Before I jump into some of the funding and kind of how we're looking at this, is there any questions about this phasing recommendation, this concept? What do the council think? Are we in the right direction here?
Richard, this is Eric. I really liked that movement of that access point over closer to that bridge. It's far more visible. It really links in much better with those type of activities. So I think that's a really good call.
Thanks. Yeah, we think it's, it'll be a good spot there for that.
Yeah, I agree. And I think the phasing is right with, with the type of work that's being done. I think that clearly the big priority, certainly one of mine, just speaking for myself, was the special events building, because that's what kind of what started all of this discussion and visioning. And so this looks right to me. Counsel, other comments?
Yeah, I agree with that and with Eric's comment. And I like taking the bigger chunk up front to try to, try to get as much of that done on the front end as possible. I think that mitigates some of the risk down the road. I say just, Richard, just as some feedback that would help me is when I was reading through this, having some pros and cons of each different option would have helped with my analysis, because I was struggling going back and forth between the different concepts, trying to figure out what was the difference, right?
Fair point.
So just having some of that, just to help me analyze it better would.
Okay.
Other comments, council? Questions?
The one that I have is it would just be good to run it past some construction folks to make sure it's planned right with most of the dirt work already being done in the front part, so it doesn't create a lot of problems with cross-traffic issues, that kind of thing with the second part.
Yes, so that was one of the things that we actually asked Beanster and Kim to do as part of this, kind of working it together, is making sure that it can be constructed, it doesn't create a lot of mess. So they did reach out to a couple of different contractors and other engineers that they work with, just to make sure it made sense and everyone concurred that it could be done without a lot of extra mess.
Okay, that's helpful to know. Thank you.
Well, what I'll do is kind of jump into the next part of this and kind of talk about how we think this can be done and what kind of some of the next steps are. So one of the things that was talked about at the council meeting in April was what is kind of a target we're shooting for? What does the Great Outdoors Foundation think is a good target as far as a funding mix for this project? So what they told us on these type of projects where you have a lot of ability to do some fundraising, that it should be about a 50% mix of city funds, 25% estate and federal funds, and then about 25% in private funds. So as we kind of start to look forward to how we're going to get this done, we're kind of using these percentages and this kind of mixture in mind for looking at that. There's a lot going on in this slide, but I'll slowly kind of walk through this and explain how we're doing this. I don't know if it's, this is covering up for everyone else, but mine, part of it's covered up, so I'll try to get all the way. So with this, what we did is break down the funding based on our recommended estimate at this time. Should the council want to adjust that, we would just certainly adjust it based on that. But given that, we have a $5.5 million phase one estimated costs. We estimate at this point, we have about $3.255 million in secured funding. And that kind of outlines here on the column in the left, approximately $3 million in city funds. That was money that has been bonded by the city for the design, that first kind of phase of design of a half a million dollars, as well as the bonds that were sold this year for it, as well as the planned bonds for 2022. In totals, are about $3 million. We've also received already $125,000 REIT grant from the Iowa DNR. That is for the wetland portion of this. We've also received another $100,000 from the Iowa Department of Ag and Land Stewardship. That's for the wetland as well. And we have approximately $30,000 in private donations to date. This is from individuals or private organizations or family foundations. So that leaves, that leaves us with about $2.245 million, we think, needs to be raised to get this first phase done. So what we did is kind of broke it down from there on what we think we have left or what our potential is for some of these other areas. We believe that we have another potential for another million dollars in grants coming forward in the next six to nine months. Some of the pending grant applications we have out there are $350,000 that was presented to Prairie Meadows about a month ago. We've applied for $125,000 from the National Park Service, their land and water conservation fund. We just turned in a half a million dollar grant to the Iowa DOT for a one-time federal rec trails program for COVID relief. We're going to be applying to the variety for about $100,000, potentially for the playground or another amenity out there. Coming up, we'll be applying to the Iowa Great Places as part of the green belts designation of that, and we can apply for up to $400,000 for that. And then finally, we just turned in yesterday a $25,000 grant that would allow for funding a couple of the stone access points from the boardwalk down to the bank of the creek. So we're really trying to find a lot of great opportunities that really match up with this that we think will put us in pretty good shape. We can't guarantee between this and other grant applications that we will, will find here in the next few months that we'll get there, but we do believe a million dollars is an achievable target there. Given that, that will leave us with about $1.25 million that needs to be raised privately to get us over the hump on this $5.5 million phase one project. And that would come from private fundraising. It also will come by working with the Clyde Community Foundation, which has pledged $300,000 over the, all three of the triad, triad projects over the next six years. We've been working really closely with the Great Outdoors Foundation, and they believe that this is a very achievable target for us over the six, the next nine to 12 months to get us moving forward on this first phase. We'll see. Sorry. So kind of from, kind of the last slide here before I open up any questions or discussion about this, kind of the next steps. So one of the next things you would see from us, should you approve of, or like the directions that we're going at this point, is we would come back with an amended contract with the Smith Group. So a couple of different things we'd need to do there. We would need to extend the design documentation and permitting for the entire project. That was originally, we are only going to permit the first phase of it, and they just, it's better to do the whole thing so we can get all approved at once. And then we would update, do a contract amendment to reflect a larger scope, a phase one scope of design and documentation and getting that ready for bid. We're going to have a lot of ongoing grant writing. We are, have a great grant writer with the Great Outdoors Foundation that's helping us submit a lot of these grants. We're also working on marketing material development, identifying potential donation opportunities, large, anywhere from a couple hundred dollars all the way up to two, three, or $400,000 that can really help kick a lot of this off. We're also going to be reforming a campaign advisory committee here in June as well, made up of city staff, the Clyde Community Foundation, as well as a series of residents, all from all walks of life, that are going to help us do out, go and find all these asks and find a way to get this, this fundraising done. We're then targeting that for kickoff in the fundraising campaigning at the Clyde Festival. Working to put together some materials, as well as some graphics that will be out there that can really give people an idea of what that looks like and what that money could go for, and really have a portal that could be easy for people to donate and know what they can donate for. From a permitting and design of phase one, we're looking at that to be done late summer into fall, looking at a phase one bidding. If we're, we're successful in getting this funding put into place is probably November to January. And then with any luck, phase one starts with a kickoff here in March of 2022. Also, one of the things here that we've been doing with, and working with the Great Outdoors Foundation on is some green belt landing themed kind of marketing and branding. And so what you see here on the right, this Clyde logo is slightly altered of the city's logo that represents the green belt landing project. So something that ties into the city's brand, but is also a little bit different that we can use on a lot of marketing materials. So as we start to kick this off in June and July, especially when we get to Clyde Festival, you'll start to see these, this brand on a lot of different materials, whether it be marketing materials, letterhead, thank you cards, a whole number of different things. And we're excited to get out into community and really make a push to get this project done. With that, I'd open it for any discussions, questions about the phasing, the funding, or any of the next steps.
Richard, I would say that the planning has come a long way, and I think we're headed in the right direction. Counsel, questions, comments for Richard?
Yeah, I have a question. With respect to the fundraising and the, and the funding of all this, can the project kickoff in March if all of the, the delta that we have right now is not raised? If we don't get all the grant money, we don't get all the fundraising, would we still kick off the project next March? Or do we have to get all the funding locked up first and then we initiate?
You know, depending on where we're at, it's probably a decision that the council need to make when we get to that, that bidding date, see how close we are. It's probably, you know, to see if there's any wiggle room in the budget, or if there's an additional funds out there. Matt, maybe you can elaborate a little bit more on that. But I think it's just one of those things on how close we are at that time and whether or not the city wants to maybe kind of float the extra money while we continue to fundraise it while it's under construction.
Yeah, I'll just add to that, Richard, for council member review. I think, you know, Richard had a good summary there. I think if we're at 90%, you know, of our target, knowing that the construction season or the construction of phase one is going to take some time, that gives us additional time to continue to do fundraising and seeking grants. That would be something we would bring forward to you at that decision point and say, you know, as a staff here, we're comfortable, we're at this 90% mark, or 95, or 93, or 85, just depending on what's outstanding in terms of fundraising. That would be a decision point right there. So our hope would be not to hold it up if it's, if we think we're close and we can do a little bit of that, you know, floating to the construction funds while we're continuing our fundraising efforts.
Okay, thank you.
Richard, on the private funding potentials right there, have we looked at developing or where's your planning process on developing targets with that, or naming rights, or what type of a private funded campaign would we launch on this? And who would we target as far as local businesses and others?
Yeah, so a couple of different things here. So following this meeting tonight and the direction we get from the council, we'll be sitting down with Smith Group and the Great Outdoors Foundation to start to finalize what some of those donation opportunities are, varying from a couple hundred dollars all the way up to three or $400,000, multiple different opportunities in between there. We'll get that all kind of, the number of, the size, which ones could be naming opportunities, how they would be recognized, and that will be all kind of part of the marketing materials that we get put together that will be ready to release around the time of Clyde Festival. And there's going to be a lot of smaller ones, a lot of 250, 500 in that neighborhood, and then fewer of those couple hundred thousand, maybe the naming of the building or the patio or the stage or the festival areas. We're also targeting maybe naming of the boardwalk and some of the seating areas. So we've got kind of a rough outline of what we think they are, but we want to verify it and make sure that that lines up with what the Great Outdoors Foundation thinks so that we can get people to buy on. Also too, we've been working with them. They've been able to develop a database of a lot of potential donors based on a number of databases that they subscribe to of five residents and businesses that they think might be good. And so what we'll do is we'll work with the campaign advisory committee and we'll start to break those up and target specific asks for different people and businesses as that starts to kick off.
Thank you.
You know, Richard, I would just add to your comments there that the, the initial prospect list that the Great Outdoors Foundation has in draft form presented to us is quite extensive and pretty targeted. I think the other aspect of this is that the campaign advisory committee, you know, that will be rejuvenated here this next month, had already started to work on many of these asks, the significant asks. So it's, it's, it's really continuing the work that has already been started, which I think is always better. So there's definitely a lot more to come there, and I'm looking forward to seeing the creativity on naming and opportunities, not just for large contributions, but for family or individual contributions to tie in the whole community. And I think, once we really start to get that out there to the entire community, kicking it off at Clyde Festival, and if we have some really solid ways for people with $20 to step forward and, and participate, you know, I think this will gain real momentum quickly. So pretty excited.
Yeah, I'm excited as well. You know, a couple of things kind of related to that, Mayor. We really want to get people excited about what that can look like at Clyde Festival. So we're actually looking at some banners that are probably in the neighborhood of four feet by eight feet, similar to the ones you see like out at the Campbell on the softball field advertising our events and our programs. We're going to take some of those images from the work that Smith Group has done and kind of orient them towards what that area will look like in the future, whether it be the wetland, the stage and festival area, and then have really easy ways for them to donate. So we can try to capture some of that kind of initial donor excitement at Clyde Festival. And I think it's going to, it's going to be very, a very slick process that we're working with the Clyde Community Foundation, as well as Community Foundation of greater Des Moines to, to really make that a simple process through their, their Give DSM program.
Thanks, Richard. Other questions, council?
Well, so Richard and Matt, then, I think probably just, this is a discussion item, it's not an action item. So we, you know, we have, we have a recommendation from staff on just how to move forward high level. And, you know, let's provide that consensus and direction for Richard and Matt, so we can move forward with the next steps that have been outlined here. A little tougher to do this while we're virtual, but we usually see heads now around the dais when we're together. But I'm basically seeing, for the most part, heads now at this point in time and thumbs up. So unless I hear otherwise.
I am ahead nod to Mayor. I guess I just add one thing to Ted's comment earlier, but that is, you know, I'm reluctant to give any room on the fundraising right now, right? I mean, the goal is 100%. And I'm always reluctant to say, yeah, we might have wiggle room at 85 or 90 or 95. I mean, for me, right today, it's 100% of the funding and the, and the projects ago.
Okay, any other, any other input, council?
Just to follow up on that, is there any portion that could be deferred if fundraising doesn't reach that goal?
I believe there's, there's probably small elements of it, but we'll just kind of have to see as we get a little bit closer. If we, if we get, we're getting close to the bedtime and we're saying 80%, we'll have to kind of talk to Smith Group and say, are there some elements we could pull out? You know, there's probably some possibilities and maybe some of the, a little bit of the parking lot work could be deferred if we needed to, but we can certainly investigate some of those things and see if there's some possibilities should we get to that point.
Yeah, I think the, I think the idea of, let's just, let's use 90% as, as a rough one. I'd be coming with 90% of the fundraising at the start, and, and I think, I think the, the intent would be for the city to, to be able to float those startup costs and, you know, get the work started as the fundraising continues. But Michael, to your point, it's, it's 100% of fundraising. It's a matter of if we have to float 10% or 5% or whatever that percentage is to get the work started, because, you know, we're going to look at a couple of years of time that the work is going to need to continue. So, yeah, I think we're all laser being focused on, on what needs to occur there.
Fantastic.
I fully think we'll get 100%.
Yeah.
Well, with that, it appears we, you know, we have general consensus to move forward with the outline that Richard has shared with us and Matt. Richard and Matt, anything else before we move to the next discussion item?
Nope. I think what, you know, you'll see us in June here sometime for an amended contract with Smith Group, but otherwise, there's going to be a lot of, a lot of background work to kind of get us to that point. But otherwise, there's going to be a lot of, a lot of background work to kind of get us to that point in July at the Clive Festival. But we're really excited about it and think that the community is going to really respond well to it.
Very good. Thank you, Richard. Thanks, everybody, for that one. We're going to look forward to our next steps. Okay, discussion item number two is the Aquatic Center Strategy and Policy Discussion. And, Richard, this one is yours as well. You take us through that, please.
All right. I'm going to bring just up another presentation here real quick that will kind of guide this discussion. All right, can everyone see that?
Yeah.
All right, excellent. So we're here tonight to kind of have a discussion about what the future of the Clive Aquatic Center looks like. This is one of the council's strategic items for this year to really strategize, how do we continue to have a very successful aquatic facility there? And get some guidance regarding how you want us to see us and approach this facility into the future. So there was, there was quite a few things in this kind of Strategies for Success document that was attached here. But try to just kind of talk through some of the high level points and some of the policy questions that we're proposing to the council tonight. So first is the policy questions. There's really three questions that we want to get some input from the council on. The first is, as what, if any threshold, is the council willing to subsidize operations of the aquatic center? And if you are, what does that mean? And how much is something that the council thinks is an appropriate subsidy? We're always going to try to be getting that facility in the black each year, but there are certain things that we can't control that, that will impact that. And so we just want to understand some of the council's thoughts on that. A second one is a scholarship program. We're interested as a staff in understanding whether or not the council might be interested in working on a scholarship program that could allow for additional people that maybe can't afford to get into our aquatic center or don't have the means to get to our aquatic center to allow them to get in there. We're operating a pool. The staff that is needed for that is always there when we're open. So it presents an opportunity potentially to bring additional people that currently use our facility for very little cost. And finally, the third policy question, we'll want some input after this, is in regards to the size of the aquatic center, the amenities. So the original bonds are pretty much paid off, except for a secondary one that added some spray features. So we want to know, is the council interested in looking at enhancements to the facility? Or under what conditions would you be interested in investing in something like that? Certainly, our recommendation, depending on that, would be that it's something that really helps make that be more successful, brings more people in there, and really keeps that facility attractive in the overall market. Also, what we did as part of this is we kind of walked through all the major areas of the aquatic center from a business standpoint. And we kind of talked about what we were seeing there, and what are some recommended action steps to undertake as part of this? So the first one is the products and services. We expect that the aquatic center is going to be very popular this summer, just based on some of the sales that we're seeing from passes, not just from Clive residents, but from people outside of Clive. The partnership with Urbendale is proving to be very successful. We're above overall our total swim sales by about $30,000 over the previous years. We also offer a lot of different project, products and services to the community that make this very popular. But we think there's ways that we can, we can get more people in there and offer better products. And so kind of the recommended action step in this area from us would be to work on that scholarship program to find ways to get people that don't normally take advantage of this facility into the aquatic center and all the amenities that it offers. The next one is market opportunities. So we want to take a look at what is the market for the Clive Aquatic Center? One of the things that we had seen over the last five years, obviously just not counting 2020 with the COVID season, we've seen total attendance really start to decrease by about $3,000 to $5,000 people per year. But there's some really great opportunities out there because the population in Clive and surrounding communities continues to increase. And we also believe there's additional room for growth in the number of Clive residents that attend this facility. Again, this is the same action step. We think this could be a really great opportunity to get a lot of people in here that haven't taken advantage of this facility. Sales and marketing, one of the things that we're seeing is that diversification of revenue streams would be really important to sustain the success. So one of the things we're looking at, we're looking at ways to provide different opportunities for concessions, different opportunities, maybe bringing in some food trucks that really help us grow an amount of revenue out here. We're also looking at ways to do different programming. We were able to get a great deal on some stand-up paddle boards that the city of Urbendale was selling when they closed their indoor facility. And we're looking at ways to offer stand-up paddleboard fitness classes or education classes. And we think that there's a great opportunity to market and create some additional partnerships, similar to what the City Council did with the city of Urbendale, allowing Urbendale residents to get Clive resident rates and having the city make up the difference. One thing that our recommended action step would be, would be to review and budget as kind of part of the strategic plan, the addition of two cabanas that could be constructed and placed at the aquatic center that could provide an opportunity for additional revenue and ways to get people in there and groups and birthday parties. We think that cost is probably less than $10,000, which, based on some of the things and some of the research we've done, it would pay off in probably about five to six years. We also want to see what the competition out there is for the Clive Aquatic Center, and how does that kind of relate to us continuing to be a success? One of the biggest things we've seen that, there's a lot more competition out there for people to get their aquatic business. A good example of that is the Lifetime Fitness that opened up fairly close to the Clive Aquatic Center that has a lot of the similar amenities and has a lot of things beyond what our aquatic center. It's a full-time, year-round fitness facility. We've also seen Adventureland continue to add large amenities in their aquatic facility that makes it hard to compete with at a municipal level. So we want to make sure that we stay relevant in this market, but we think it's something that we can continue to do. And the growing population around Clive and Urbendale and Johnston and Grimes and West Des Moines and Waukees, really, it just provides a lot of opportunity that despite some of the additional competition, that we can really be successful here. An action step here, though, it goes back to that first policy question about amenities. So should the council want us to investigate or be interested in looking at investigating an additional aquatic, or amenity out here? We want to make sure it be something that would make sense for the market, something that would draw additional people to the aquatic center. We wouldn't want to ask you to invest in something out here that wouldn't have a return on getting more people into the aquatic facility more often. Operations, from that standpoint, we have an amazing facility that is approaching about 20 years old. It's still one of the best ones in central Iowa, if not the state of Iowa. But we are starting to see some aging things that need to be handled. And we believe that it's probably going to need about $150,000 to $300,000 in repairs, looking at things such as the, the roof needs to be replaced. We're seeing some valves and pumps that are likely going to be needed to be replaced. We might have to strip down and completely repaint the pools at some point. So a lot of things that are going to need to be repaired and replaced. And so the action step here would be to work with the council and city manager to appropriately budget those repairs in the coming years as part of the city's parks and trails budget. Like I said, we think it'll be about $150,000 to $300,000 over the next five years. Additionally, something that we're also at least having a high level look at is the Special Events Building, as well as the two buildings of the aquatic center, have no trees in the way. They have perfect south-facing roofs. And so we're seeing if it might be possible, or what sort of payback there might be to adding solar arrays to those facilities to offset some of the costs. So we're going to get a preliminary report from our current architect for the Special Events Building. And if it's something that, that we think might be attractive overall from a fiscal standpoint, well, it's something we'll bring forward for consideration to the council. So a quick financial analysis, this is something we've talked about several times last year. But the increase in lifeguard salaries has caused a lot of our expenses to exceed our operating revenues. So approximately five years ago, we were seeing an operating revenue at about $65,000 in the black. But a combination of things such as the increased competition, as well as some of our admission prices increasing, has made it that our revenues have gone down and those expenses increased. So we do operate as a deficit right now. One of the things, like I just talked a little while ago, we think the solar could be a way to maybe reduce some of the costs there and overall bring a higher efficiency from a financial standpoint. We also think too that we can get close to being on black every year if we can get about 55,000 to 57,000 attendees into the aquatic center every year. So with that, I'd open up any questions or any thoughts on those three policy questions that we put to the council? And I'll just kind of take it back to those.
Richard, great, great presentation. And I think it really kind of hones it down to the, to the essential issues that we have. You know, I think John was on council when the decision was made to build the aquatic center. You know, it's never just about building, and it's about maintaining it going forward. And so I guess I'd be interested to know, you know, where this sits in, you know, in a larger budget. I think, I think in terms of, of funding, you know, new roofs and valves and things of that nature. And remind me how long ago it was that we did really kind of the last big upgrade with the splash pad, et cetera, inside the aquatic center?
I don't know the exact date of that, but I think it's around 2007, 2008 was the date of that, that addition.
That long ago?
It's not that long ago. So it was done within the first year or two that I was here at the city. So it would have been probably 2012 would be my guess, is when the splash pad with the cannons were added on that southwest corner of the property. And along with, we also added a handicap accessibility for the lazy river and some other safety upgrades with that improvement. And we've done some smaller things over between now and then with some of the slides having to need, some of them need to be replaced because some of the concrete was falling away. But the last major upgrade was, I want to say, 2012.
Well, along with the UV filtration system as well, that was
Right.
pretty pricey.
Yeah. I agree with you, Matt. I was, I was on council when we did some of those upgrades of toad, I don't know, some toadstool and some other amenities being put in that pool. So 13, 12, or 13?
You know, I just got a couple of comments. One, I thought it's very, very well thought out and thoughtful as far as the recommendations right here. Look, we've been very fortunate with the aquatic center to be in the black for many, many years. Just it's been the last couple of years with increased, a combination of increased competition, bad weather, you know, COVID, things of that nature. The reality is, if we want to have a premium product and not have the cities of Waukees, Urbendale, Johnston, Grimes, you know, build their own, their own aquatic centers, which is always a possibility out there. And one of the reasons that they have not built those is because they don't have the public support for them. A lot of folks like to use ours. And I'm a big believer in, we have a great asset. It is showing its age a little bit. And if we want to keep that asset to where we dominate the market out here, we need to spend some money in it. I think we've done a good job over the years with some of the things we've just talked about. But clearly, we need to continue to invest.
All right. So, Richard, can you talk to me about our, like our partnerships with West Des Moines? And now Urbendale, how does that work financially for us?
So a couple of different things here. I'll start with the West Des Moines. So that's a 28-year agreement with them. And what, this is somewhat what relates to the increasing cost of our lifeguards. So as part of that, we keep the same lifeguard salary rates for those lifeguards because there's a kind of reciprocal agreement in there that if we need some lifeguards because we're short, we can ask them to come over and work our center. And the same way around, if they're short for their two aquatic facilities, they can call us and ask to have some of their lifeguards, our lifeguards go out there. Also, probably the biggest benefit of that agreement is it allows that reciprocity with the two aquatic centers there in West Des Moines. So if you buy a Clive Aquatic Center pass, you can also go into Valley View and Holiday Aquatic Centers in the city of West Des Moines. And the same works for them. If they, if someone buys a aquatic center pass for West Des Moines, they can come into the Clive Aquatic Center. Generally speaking, there's some kind of targets in there for how many people go back and forth, and then we settle up at the end. In most cases, it was West Des Moines sending us a little bit of money because more people would come this way than would go that way. But I think maybe in 2019 was one of the few times where we've actually had to send a little bit of money that way because more people went to the West Des Moines facilities. In regards to Urbendale, that's just a straight agreement with them that with the closing of their facility, they wanted to find a way to give their residents a little, a little break on getting aquatic amenities. So they did some other things with some private swim schools for lessons. But with the, with the city of Clive, they wanted just to allow their residents to have the resident rate for swim passes. So at the end of this year, we'll settle up and send them an invoice for the difference based on all Urbendale residents. So that's just a financial agreement. And we think that there's really some opportunities for that with some of these other suburban communities, potentially Waukees, Johnston, Grimes, that might be a way, absent of them, having a aquatic facility that people could have that resource.
Well, that's what I wanted to talk about because, you know, we talk about competition, but I actually think that there's synergies there that we should be taking advantage of more than what we are now. So let me put my parent hat on. We've been, we've had a family membership for a few years now. We're going to, we've already renewed for this year. But I can tell you, after a few times at the same aquatic center, the kids get bored. Want to go back, right? But when we have other options like the Holiday Park one and the other, the other one in West Des Moines, they want to go. And then, you know, there's, there's, there's variation there and there's variety and, and they enjoy it. And, you know, in my mind, what would be nice, and I know this isn't going to happen this year, but ideally, you buy a aquatic center pass and it works at any regional aquatic center, whether it's Ankeny, or it's City of Des Moines, or West Des Moines or Clive. And they could go to any one of them. And by doing that, I think it, it helps mitigate that competition aspect of it. You know, if we can make it work financially, I think you'd get more people signing up because there's more opportunities then. So I don't know, I think that's, you know, we should be talking to Ankeny and see if we can come up with some sort of agreement with Ankeny as well. I mean, I know it's a little bit of a drive, but some people will want to do that, you know, to just to get that variety. And I think that would help grow our attendance as a result.
No, I think, I think there's some really great, it's, it's kind of similar to the golf course kind of scenario that Des Moines has with their public courses, that if you buy a badge there, you can, Gulfport County is now Altoona's. So you get a lot more for your bang for your buck. And that's, that's one of the strategic advantages the municipalities do have against the Adventurelands and the Lifetime Fitnesses. We do have that where some of those places do not. So I think there's some, some real merit in reaching out and seeing if those communities might be interested. And we have really good relationships with all those park and rec directors as well that, you know, it'd be interesting that we could probably start a conversation and at least test the waters.
Yeah, I think we should be expanding that, you know, and like I said, I think, I think that'll help mitigate some of that competitive aspect of this. With some of the other questions you asked, I agree with Eric wholeheartedly as far as the investment. I think we'd be foolish not to invest because it's going to deteriorate, continue to deteriorate over time. It gets, it gets tired and weathered and not as interesting, right, for the kids? So again, I, I think we, we would lose money in the long run if we don't do those investments. So I think we need to look at that very seriously and ways to continue to enhance what we already have. And then the other question you had on the operational subsidy, obviously, a lot of that's going to just depend on the scope. You know, if it's a one-time subsidy, okay. You know, I think, you know, certainly, I think we could stomach that. If it's something that's an ongoing and it's severe, then I think we need to really look at our business model. Because since I've been on the council, and, and it's severe, then I think we need to really look at our business model because since I've been on the council, it's pretty much been, you know, break even or really close or, or we make a little money operationally. We always got the capital side of it and, and that's fine. Uh, but from an operation standpoint, we, we've always been able to pretty hold that, pretty much hold that steady. Um, and I would, I would hope that we would still be able to do that going forward, especially as long as we're, we're doing these, these enhancements and, and reinvestments into uh, the facility. So um, my thoughts.
Thank you.
I would add that to, to Ted's point. It has kind of held its own uh, at least uh, until twenty seventeen and it hasn't since then. Um, I'm interested, uh, Richard, in your point earlier about our agreement with West Des Moines and um, lifeguards and, and how often have we had to utilize that aspect of our agreement with West Des Moines?
I, I would say uh, it's seldom to almost never. Um, Brian uh, does such a great job with the culture there with the lifeguards and the team that he puts together that um, we're almost always ready to go. We're, we have enough lifeguards and we have over sixty percent return from year to year. Um, so it's really not a, a thing that we use very often. Um, and every couple of years, we'll, we'll get a call from West Des Moines, especially towards the, the beginning or the end of the season when it's hardest to get the lifeguards, but that's pretty rare as well.
Well, you mentioned as, as an aside to, to talking about that point that that is something that, that aspect of our agreement perhaps has kept our lifeguard costs higher? Or did I misunderstand what you were?
Um, it has triggered them to go higher than probably than we probably would have recommended over the past few years. So there, it's kind of been somewhat of a, an arms race with lifeguard salaries across the metro because um, it becomes so difficult to, to, to get lifeguards to work at a lot of these uh, facilities because, you know, a lot of the, the fast food restaurants and other places were, were paying just as much or more. So it became very difficult. Um, but that agreement kind of stuck us to whatever salaries uh, West Des Moines wanted to increase theirs too. And so that was a lot of the increases where we generally weren't having a lot of issues with um, finding lifeguards because of the culture that Brian has kind of instituted there.
Yeah, we've been very fortunate there and that's uh, that's made a difference for us. Um, just one other quick thing before we move to other questions, but uh, so in our capital budgeting, you know, wha- what's the annual number? Or is there one? Haven't looked at the budget for a little while.
So um, you're talking about as far as repairs and to make sure it stays open?
Repairs, maintenance, uh, and investments.
So a couple of different things. We try to uh, approach those from a kind of item by item line as part of the budgeting process. So a couple of things that we asked for in the approved budget were um, a little bit of ventilation and some fans with the pump room, replacement of those two um, trees on the lazy river. They were starting, they're starting to fall apart. So what we try to do is come with some of those items um, a little by little. So we're not asking for it all at once. Um, it's just that we're coming up now on probably a few of the bigger repairs. The roof will be probably one of the larger ones. We estimate it's probably in the neighborhood of seventy to a hundred thousand dollars on that. Um, and if we have to get in and replace um, a lot of those uh, valves and some of the operations of um, the, the leisure pool and some of those other areas, those will be some bigger ticket items, but um, we've been pretty fortunate. We, we budget money every year to touch up the paint out there and some of the things that, that really keep it looking good. Um, it's just the, the bigger ones are the ones that we're going to have to start looking at here in the next few years.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Well, I, I have a couple of comments and then maybe a question, uh, a few questions, but along with those annual passes that Weaver says he bought for the family, I assume we sold the Weaver boys the pass to the Walnut Creek Bridge Pass too. So I appreciate that Weaver, but for the bridge. Right, right. For your boys. But on the scholarship program, you know, some of the problem that I'm hearing is yes, entrance to it and paying that fee, but I'm still worried that the, that the kids that are gonna, I won't say all of them, but uh, the bigger piece of that puzzle is getting them there. Mm-hmm. Right? And so if you got a scholarship, we still got to get them to the pool. So what, what, what do you think about that as in, you know? How could we do that?
Yeah, a couple of things, you know, Matt and I talked, um, had a couple of conversations about that. You know, I think some of that, that question um, really directly goes to the, the work that's being done with the eighty six street plan. Um, we're hearing a lot of people wanting to connect to the green belt because there's not a good connection for that neighborhood. So I think it's a couple fold. Um, making sure that all the neighborhoods in the city have access to the green belt, which ties directly to uh, the aquatic center there. Uh, another one is uh, maybe looking at a, a shuttle that maybe um, we work with city staff, maybe do a shuttle a few times a day in areas where um, there's maybe not as many people that could um, get to the aquatic center itself. So we, we think there's some opportunities out there. We just haven't fully fleshed them out yet, but I think there's really, along with that, could be some, some great ways to really think that service.
Good. I'd be supportive of the scholarship program, but I do think that, that for me, that piece of transportation would have to come along with it. Right? And to, to give it to them and then get them there. On the piece of, of funding, I'm with the, the rest of them. If we're going to have the pool, we gotta fund it. Um, and so you've got to do the updates. Otherwise, get rid of the pool, right? If you're not going to take care of it. I do worry about a, a range of a hundred and fifty to three hundred is a huge range. Um, so, but, but again, I support continuing to fund it. There are several years back, someone did approach us on solar, uh, even for running the pumps and stuff uh, of the pro, of the pool. So maybe we can look up the name of that. I know I'd have it and then we could reengage with them. Uh, running the pumps for the pool, especially if you say it's into life of these pumps and uh, it would run electricity and, and the pumps. But I, I like that idea as well. And with Ted, I'd have to hear more about the subsidy. If, if it's a capital project, yep, I get that. But if it's an ongoing, it's going to depend on how much. So.
Hey Mike, on that transportation piece, would that be something we could partner with Dart on and, uh, on one of their shuttles?
Yeah, possibly. I mean, it's worth asking, right? Um, I know we have our own uh, vans as well. Uh, but you know, do we want to get in that business? So yeah, maybe starting with Dart would be a good, uh, a good start. Don would be a one uh, willing to start that conversation with Dart, I, I'm sure.
Yeah, I think from an operational subsidy perspective, I, I think obviously our goal is to, is to break even, uh, at least, and at, at the very least, and be profitable. I'm looking at three years in numbers here that um, you know, that have relatively small and, and got pretty big by uh, by twenty nineteen. Uh, I, I think our goal should always be at minimum break even. I, I don't know that I'm interested in saying, you know, I could live with a fifty thousand dollar a year subsidy. Because, because I think our challenge and our responsibility is to find out a way, to find ways, multiple ways to get to at least break even with a facility like this. Now I know, if you're making big investments, but I mean, I'm talking operationally.
Yes.
And I, I guess for the record, I, 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 I want that to be heard.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions, counsel?
You know, the only thing that I'd add is I was intrigued by some of the marketing ideas, Richard, that we talked about here. And I would think that's a key component. I, I really like the idea of opening up the, the family passes to Waki, to Johnston Grimes. But you know, a, a pass is only as good as, as people that hear about it and generate interest in that. And and that's our, I think that would be our key to, to launch, whether it's a, a social media campaign or, or a direct mail campaign or whatever it is to educate people on the opportunity for the Clive Aquatic Center and, and uh, you know, that's a, a good way to bolster those numbers.
Yeah, I, you know, especially with so many people that are moving to these western suburbs, not just Clive, but all the western sub, north and western suburbs out here. There's people that are brand new to the area that may not even know about it. So I think there's some really great potential to, to at least tell the people that are out there and give them that opportunity because it really is the, the closest aquatic center to a lot of these, these people out here.
Well, this has been a great discussion and Richard, again, a, a a solid presentation in terms of really what we need to be considering, um, you know, going forward. Um, I think through the discussion, uh, you know, I think that we have, that we have some consensus on um, you know, on, on the policy questions at a high level.
Yep.
Um, Derek's just recent point, uh, with the, the marketing opportunities, the collaborative opportunities, which, which really interests me with our, with our fellow communities. Um, you know, um, we want to have you come back to us, uh, I think, as, as we continue to, to refine a lot of this and continue to work on it. But this is something that definitely needs to be in our op-ed. Uh, regularly going forward, I think, is we're kind of at a crossroads with, with a very significant city investment. Twenty-year-old city investment. Okay. Richard, do you have anything else on this?
Yeah, I just, I'll, I'll kind of leave everyone with this. So uh, Saturday was supposed to be our, our first day of opening because of the soft opening of the Memorial Day weekend, but uh, the, clearly the weather is not going to work out for us probably. Um, our typical policy is we don't open if the high temperature is not going to be seventy degrees. So um, we'll make an announcement probably in the afternoon tomorrow, but it's highly unlikely that we will be opening um, this weekend just because high temperatures are in the low to mid sixties for the entire weekend. Um, if that's the case, um, we're going to look forward to reopening for the entire season here the following weekend. So kind of a bummer on the weather, but um, we know the excitement's out there and we're looking forward to seeing everyone this year.
Very good, Richard. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, counsel, we're going to move to reports and Pete, let's go down to your end of the dais.
Thank you, Your Honor. So it's been a very busy week of storytelling for the city. Yesterday, we were very happy to host Congresswoman Axny at the Clive Fire Department to talk about the first uh, year of what is proving to be a very successful program that was funded with federal dollars that came via our friends and partners at Pope County. The program that those dollars are funding, we're calling it the PAC program, proactive annual check-in. The conversation, the conversation yesterday with the Congresswoman was to lift up just how valuable that program has been for our first responders and why we believe it's something that would be appropriate for the Clive Police Department in the future and potentially even more staff. Uh, this aligns very nicely with the strategic priority that was set by the council last August about community brain health and identifying partners. This is an example of a, not just identifying partners, but actually putting dollars on target and doing something that was very timely and very important. This time, uh, Mayor and also Chief Rowe, either one of you have some reflections on that event that you think the rest of the council would benefit from? I, please, I'd love, we'd love to hear them.
Chief, I'll defer to you and then follow up.
Thank you, sir. Chief Rowe?
Thank you, Mayor and Pete. Um, it was a, it was a fantastic conversation. I think Congresswoman Axny showed a a sincere concern for mental health for, for first responders. Uh, she was very interested in uh, the things that were shared. Um, and I think she really honed in with a particular interest on the, the impacts that mental health plays uh, with families, uh, with, you know, particularly in the firefighting world where you're working. Um, you know, you're gone every third night. Um, you see some bad stuff. So whether you're low on sleep or you've been on a, on a bad call, you, you take that home and that can really impact you, your family life. And the other thing I thought she was particularly concerned with was, um, I think she felt it was a great program that we have. And in her mind, it was, you know, how do we, how do we expand this? How do we get this type of program out to, to help other people? So um, I was encouraged with it and certainly very thankful for um, the support of the, the federal dollars through the, through the grant that helped support us uh, for this five-year program.
With great project, oh, sorry, Mayor, go ahead.
Well, I, you know, Chief, to all of your points, um, you know, this is a first step for us in just scratching the surface on a strategic priority of the council and, and that is finding ways to improve the mental health of our employees. Um, starting here with the fire department, I'm really, really hopeful that we'll take the necessary steps to move this to the police department in due time. Um, but to sit yesterday in, in that, you know, in, in that venue with that group and to hear directly from, you know, one of our firefighters a- about how it's impacted their, their life and the way that they live. Um, it was really astonishing and um, you know, and I think just for me, um, just capitalized even more on the fact that, that really this is, this is a fact of life for us um, as the city of Clive, it, it, you know, in our, with our employees. Um, it's a societal, certainly a societal issue. Um, but it, it encouraged me and inspired me even more to say as leadership, how do we continue to prioritize this throughout our organization? Um, because, because it's working now. And when you have employee buy-in, because you got to remember, there's a lot of stigma. There's a lot that goes along with participating in a program like this. And they weren't able to share with us that, that really the stigma's got away. That now it's an, it's an accepted practice to go see, to go see Dr. Paul and, and to spend that time uh, with him because it's helpful. And uh, boy, if we're providing that kind of environment here for our employees, um, that, that's, that's what we want to do. So I was just so encouraged by it.
Thank you, Your Honor. So next steps, as we keep identifying partnerships on this plank, we'll continue working with our entire federal delegation to tell this very positive story and keep our eyes open for any federal funding that's coming through the second big recovery uh, piece of legislation that Congress has passed. There may be, in addition to the dollars that are already programmed for Clive, there may be other places where we can go and access state dollars or dollars that come to Pope County and we'll aggressively pursue those because we've got data and a real live project now that I think can distinguish us from others. We also now are sharing this story and looking forward to other conversations with partners at Clive Behavioral Health. They have moved now past their sort of period of crossing all the Ts, dotting all the Is, getting straight with everybody. They need to make sure they're straight with, with the state and uh, some other agencies. And now we'll be ramping up the number of patients that they're able to see there at the facility. This also frees them up now to start working on some of their community collaborations, which they're excited about. So we're getting those next meetings scheduled with Clive Behavioral Health to continue the discussion. Uh, the chiefs and I also will now be preparing additional uh, research that we're doing on this strategic priority for the council and later on this summer, bringing it to the council for discussion as we think about what are the right next steps for the city. Two more stories that are right in front of us that we're excited about. One will be over at Lanan Park with a number of the students that worked on our Lanan Park planning project tomorrow to give them a little gift and tell them about the next ways that they can stay engaged with the broader eighty-sixth street neighborhood planning project. I think this has been a real star in our, sort of in our crown, a jewel in our crown with the community engagement around the eighty-sixth street process. Especially when you consider the COVID pandemic context during which most of this activity has happened. The next stages, I know, uh, talking to Doug and Amanda, to everybody else involved with this, are going to be hopefully full of much more in-person types of touches. Uh, they are more traditional when we think about how we do good planning work around a neighborhood and what it could become. But those kids, they deserve a lot of credit. They've worked hard. Their teachers and faculty have worked hard and their ideas, I think, are, are, are very valuable. Finally, I'll be working with our friends in the Public Works Department tomorrow to paint our first Clive Stormwater murals around the Indian Hills Junior High Campus. This has been a project that's been cooking since the fall. And uh, we work closely with artist John Bosley at Bos Prince in West Des Moines to take the kids' ideas and since it synthesized them into something we can put on the streets. I also want to give a shout out to the industrial arts class at Valley High School. Those students took our design and inputted it using their uh, computer-assisted cutting tools, cut them up for us. And for the last week, we've been practicing. Uh, especially want to thank uh, Jerry Freestone and all the folks in Public Works who not only helped procure the paint, but just brought the good sense and the, the knowledge about what it takes to execute this so that we get great results. The weather is not perfect, but it's passable. So we'll get as many done tomorrow as we can. The weather is not perfect, but it's passable. So we'll get as many done tomorrow as we can. And then look forward to the next steps in this project where we'll be able to take it out to more Clive neighborhoods and work with more families to have them bring the mural to Storm Tower intake near their property. And at that same time, start to tell the story about how water shapes our lives here in Clive, and how we have a chance to be good stewards of that water and good stewards of our place like the Clive Green Belt. That's everything I had to say, Your Honor.
Good stuff, Pete. Counsel, questions for Pete?
Hey, where are those murals going to be?
Right now, we don't have, besides the campus of Indian Hills Junior High, we haven't picked other locations yet. My concept is that we will put it out there to the community and say, would you like to work with us on installing one of these next to your sidewalk or next to your property? And so we'll do it on a volunteer basis to start with. We've got enough paint to get quite a few of these done. And after we see whether that generates enough interest, then we can decide if we want to take it a step further and start strategically putting the mural on places like the trail within the Green Belt or a key entry point, trailheads, as folks are entering into the Green Belt as well.
But the first one's going to be at Indian Hills itself?
Yep, around the campus. So up on the northeast corner of their campus, up by the field, on the northwest corner, over by the field, and that roughly at the intersection of a forest where it comes straight from south up toward the campus.
Sure, okay, interesting.
Thank you, Pete. We're going to look forward to seeing those. Ted, let's move to you.
Nothing to nightmare.
Okay, thank you, Eric.
Couple of things, Mayor. One, the District One Create Clive Committee met, and the topics discussed was what is possible and next moves. Have another meeting next month to continue forward with the District One planning. Also, the Lawrence and Skate Park opened up, which is a great venture that Catch 22 has been promoting heavily with the Do Tour. We're able to go to that, and it's just a tremendous new community regional asset. A lot of people, a lot of excitement, really puts Des Moines on the map. This was a qualifying event for the Olympics. So really, really cool stuff. That's just another added traction for the greater Des Moines metro area. So great addition.
Yeah, great way to kick off the season. Yeah, fantastic. Thank you, Eric. John?
No thanks tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you, John. I would just mention that, of course, we were all present this morning at our employee appreciation breakfast. We do this annually to appreciate our employees, to give out our service awards and to recognize people for the great work that they do for us. I mentioned in my comments that someone stopped me on the sidewalk last night to offer very nice compliments about, you know, what we do and what our employees do. And it's funny, after the event, when I got my mail, I got another, an actual thank you card in the mail from a couple that had a problem with some right-of-way issues and they couldn't get them solved and finally got with one of our folks and they were able to get it solved for them and they felt compelled to write a thank you letter to me for that. Just goes to show, it's 98% of what our employees do is just fantastic work and is noticed by the public because I hear about it regularly. I'm sure we all do. And then you have 2% in everything you do otherwise. So just very excited, proud of our people. It was a great event this morning, and I want to thank everybody that worked to put this event on, to appreciate our employees. So that's what I have. Susan?
I think people will be excited to know that the Bravo Board is talking about the Bravo Gala being in person again. So you can start looking forward to that. The Clive Community Foundation, if you hadn't already heard, is really trying to use the Battle of the Burbs race with Nick Mick coming up in early August as an opportunity to do some fundraising to generate resources to the group. They're taking promise to help support the triad very seriously. So I know President Jane Fogg has been involved in some of the meetings with Richard and others. So we'll hear more about that at their meeting tomorrow. And I'll stop with that.
Well, Battle of the Burbs, Susan, thank you for bringing that up because, you know, that's a pretty significant now Clive community event. We, as a city, participate because it runs primarily through the city of Clive and through Petri Club. But it's not just for the serious runners, for the walker like me, and then there's kids' fun runs, et cetera. Five and 10K. But, you know, all of those funds go back to, and now we have the cities of Clive, West Des Moines, Waqee, Johnston, and Urbendale participating. And so the proceeds from this event go back to each of the cities, either their community foundation or another entity for community betterment kind of across the spectrum. And, you know, that's pretty cool stuff. And so I'm going to encourage all of us to, A, participate, register, and register that you're walking or running for the city of Clive because that's the, you know, that's the mark for us. That's what helps us win that championship belt to have the most dedicated participants for the city of Clive. And that's what the Battle of the Burbs is all about. How many people can you get to participate on your behalf in the event? So pretty great stuff, August 7. And our friends at NCMIC spent a lot of resources to make this happen. So we're really grateful for that partnership and and I know many of you have participated in the past. So this should be a great year. Thanks, Susan.
You know, one thing I'd add to that is I got agreement from the board that we can form a team. It'll be the Clive Community Foundation team. And so I'm going to go ahead and register that team tonight and would encourage you to sign up as part of that team. It'll save you a couple of bucks and ensure that your registration goes to Clive.
Excellent. Thank you, Susan, for doing that. Okay, Michael, we'll slide over to you.
I do not have anything tonight, sir.
All right, very good. Madam Counsel, anything for us?
Nothing for the good of the crew, except I will be starting some military travel. So you will have a bench there the next few meetings. Thank you.
Godspeed on your travels. Thank you. All right, Matt.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just wanted to reiterate your comments on the employee appreciation breakfast this morning. Appreciate the entire council being there and spending that time, first time in having that whole group in person in quite some time. So very important this morning. The only other thing that I have tonight is talking a little bit about COVID mask restrictions in our city facilities following the state legislation that passed last week. There's been quite a bit of confusion about how that applies to cities. Also, starting to see the case counts drop substantially in Iowa. Also, the hospitalizations being at their lowest level since before the pandemic. I've been really kind of thinking about this. I know there's been some interesting counsel of what we do within our city facilities. We currently have a mask requirement for anybody in the public coming into our facilities. I discovered through a city manager survey from earlier this week that we are the only city that is currently requiring masks in city facility. Everybody has gone optional at this point. And so we are starting to see a little bit of, well, I guess we'll call it disagreements with some of the public coming into the facility, mainly the library, that library staff are having to deal with in terms of, you know, saying that this isn't appropriate to require masks, that the state law doesn't allow us to do that. And it's with all those things combined, I wanted to bring this forward to the council tonight for discussion, my recommendation that we move to what I would call a masks-encouraged position with all of our city facilities for the public and staff going forward, starting June 1. So I wanted to get, there's no concerns from the council with that position. Would like to move to that here relatively quickly, get our signage changed and be consistent with all of our surrounding cities, but also knowing kind of where the trend is going and in a positive way in the state and thankfully the country from this pandemic and also just being mindful of not putting staff in the difficult positions that they're starting to be in over the last week with kind of dealing with folks that disagree with our mask requirement in the facility. So would put that out there, Your Honor, but unless there's any concerns, I would like to move forward with that in our facilities.
Matt, I agree. And I think the numbers speak pretty loudly. The trends can continue to move very positively for us. And that's a wonderful thing. It can't happen soon enough. So to me, it seems prudent to make the adjustment June 1, as far as I'm concerned. Others?
I think that's good policy.
Okay, well, I'm seeing heads not around and thumbs up and that sort of thing. So let's proceed.
All right, that is all I have, Your Honor, unless there's any questions for me.
Thank you, Matt. Counsel, any questions for Matt?
I just have one question on the mask issue. How are, under what the legislature passed, are we supposed to handle it when people aren't vaccinated? Is there anything that goes on the sign that says, if not vaccinated, you should wear a mask?
So that's, I know some businesses have done that. So the state law, the way I read it, and our legal councils also read it, the way I understand it from the Iowa League of Cities, is it doesn't, the state law that was passed last week does not preempt a city from having a mask requirement in its own facility. It was really more outward-facing to basically clear up any conversation about whether a city can implement a mask mandate, or a county, implement a mask mandate on private property essentially, or real property within the community. So obviously, the city of Des Moines did a mask mandate. I think the city of Waqee did one as well. And I know there was a lot of discussions we had over the last year of whether or not it was legal for a city or a county to do that on their own. Dubuque County, where I'm from, and the city of Dubuque did a mask mandate as well. And the governor claimed that that wasn't allowed, but there was just not great clarity on that. And the way I see it is the legislation passed last week eliminates any ambiguity. It makes it very clear that cities and counties aren't allowed to do anything beyond what the state is mandating. And so I saw it as an outward-facing state law, whereas cities still have the flexibility with the facilities that they control, like City Hall, Library, other city facilities, to be able to put our own requirements in place. Now, a number of the cities surrounding us, you know, made their decisions. I didn't get exact dates of when they transitioned it, but I know that a number of them were still requiring masks before the state law, and then that changed after the state law. So I think there was a lot of confusion with the public of what that state law meant in terms of just really reading the details with the schools being a lot more detailed in terms of lifting those requirements and within the facilities and for the public. So that's kind of how that all came about, at least the way I understand it.
Well, as far as I know, the CDC guidance is still that an unvaccinated person is to wear a mask. And those are the signs that I'm seeing at the businesses that basically say, if you're not vaccinated, wear a mask. I think they're probably the least likely people to put a mask on. But to keep in compliance with what the CDC is recommending, I just wondered what wording we're going to use in that regard.
I wasn't intending to do that, but that's something we could do. I was going to stick with masks encouraged and leave it pretty simple. But if that's something the council is interested in, we could definitely go that route. We've done that with staff at this point in terms of vaccinated, unvaccinated within the facilities. But we could definitely change that. For me, it's, again, you're kind of, we could go on the honor system with that. We're not necessarily, I don't intend to have staff inquire to somebody who comes into the library without a mask on it to ask the question, hey, you're vaccinated. It's going to be just basically, we're going on the honor system, which I know a lot of businesses are doing that and even put it on the sign. So something we could do as well.
Any thoughts for mothers on verbiage?
I would keep it as simple as possible.
Yeah, I honestly agree to keep it as simple as possible. You know, that's that's my, I agree with that.
People are going to make their decision, you know, with however they want at this point. So, yeah, just keep it simple.
Yeah, we don't need anybody losing teeth like happened to the flight attendant on the Southwest Airlines. Basically, from what I'm hearing, it's just kind of stay tuned till the fall and may need to have more stringent guidance at that point.
Well, I think we've proven ourselves to be pretty nimble in the management of the pandemic and our facilities. And I think our staff's done a great job with that. And now we're just, we're moving to the next step. And hopefully, hopefully by the fall, we you know, we won't have to have signs up. But if we do, we do. And if we have to move the other direction, we will. So we're very comfortable with with our handling of it. Matt, thank you. Anything else on that topic?
All I have, Your Honor.
Okay. Matthew, any additional correspondence we need to be aware of?
All I would offer up is a quick apology for how the votes were displaying and my assurance to you that despite the display problem, they were recorded correctly. So we'll continue to provide to you to get that corrected. But other than that, I have nothing.
Matthew, thank you. Counsel, anything else for the good of the order? Saying nothing, we're going to adjourn at 8:07 PM. Thanks, everybody. Have a great weekend, long weekend, I hope, for all of you, and be safe.